Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, May 7th, 2018. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocations, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are ever mindful of the many dilemmas and problems that are facing our world in the United States. We want to send a special blessing tonight to those from our country who are in the state of Hawaii and with the tremendous volcano activity that they are experiencing over there. We just ask that special blessings be showered upon them and that safety and preservation of life and safety and health is number one, and we sure it will be. Also tonight, we want to remember those from our country who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we ask that all those men and women from our community and from out our country who are serving are blessed with protection as they go about their vital mission. As always tonight, we want to ask for direction and vision and understanding as we act on the various items of business before us, knowing that each member of the city council is here in their own heart and mind to do the very best job they can on behalf of the Batavia and its lively future. We just ask for all these blessings, knowing that we live in a very special town with many things that we should be very proud of and much that we can hopefully bring to the future to make it even a greater and grander place for all of us to live and for our future generations to enjoy. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Alderman, you want to meet us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer?
Here.
Serone?
McFadden?
Here.
The record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected aldermen are present and accounted for this evening's meeting, so that we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Atack is chairman of Governmental Services Committee. Would you present this?
I do not have anything this evening.
Okay. Anybody else? Or, Laura?
I would like to request that number nineteen on the agenda be moved up to number thirteen.
Is that nineteen to thirteen?
Yes.
Okay. We'll just switch the thirteen then to nineteen?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments or questions? I guess we need a motion then to approve. Motion second for the switching the agenda. Any further discussion?
I didn't catch that, sorry.
Chanset?
Chanset.
And Salvati.
And Salvati.
Thank you.
Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Thank you.
Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, then moving to the appointment to the paid-on-call recruit program of the Batavia Fire Department. We have Maxwell Hyve- is it Hyveley?
Yes, sir.
Chief, you want to let the chief make a few introductory remarks?
This is Max Hyveley. He's been a paramedic with us for about, for a couple of months now, and now he's going to be a member of our paid-on-call. He is a basic operations firefighter, and he's been working for the Montgomery Fire Department for about the last four years.
Okay, I would ask for a motion of confirmation of my appointment of Maxwell to the paid-on-call Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, or?
Chanset.
Chanset? Everybody's talking at once here. Who seconded it?
Rosato.
Rosato, okay. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
If you rea- raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I instate your name.
I am Maxwell Hyveley.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of paid-on-call firefighter?
To the position of paid-on-call firefighter.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do sound, we swear?
Do sound, we swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of paid-on-call firefighter?
Of the position of paid-on-call firefighter.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability. Congratulations. Alderman Atack, please.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Committee of the whole minutes from March 20th, March 27th, April 3rd, and April 10th, 2018. Historic Preservation Commission minutes for April 19th, 2018. Planned commission minutes for March 21st, April 4th, April 18th, 2018. January, February, March, City Council financials. Approvals. April 20th, 2018, payroll in the amount of $813,484.61. May 4th, 2018, payroll in the amount of $825,226.05. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,477,156.05. Resolution 18-49-R requesting a permit from IDOT for closure of various roadways for the 2018 triathlon. Resolution 18-50-R requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for the 2018 farmers market. Ordinance 18-25, declaring surplus property. Approval, reject bids, number 18-008 for 2018 electric tree trimming project. Approval, Class F special event liquor license for Windmill City Festival. Ordinance 18-22, variance for tower signs for Windmill Creek Shopping Center, Main, and 7- 271 through 351 South Randall, Crash Champions. Ordinance 18-24, variances for a building addition at 1141 Morton Street. Resolution 1853-R adopting City of Batavia debt management policy. Ordinance 18-27, vacation of Old Island Avenue right-of-way. Resolution 18-51-R, approval of an employment agreement for Jeanette Armbrust. Ordinance 18-26, annexing part of 908 Bernadette Lane. I move that the consent agenda be approved as read.
Second. Motion by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Malley. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Consent agenda items are approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent, so all those are approved. Okay, moving to item number eight, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak to us tonight about anything not on the agenda? All right. Next, we move to the Batavia Chamber of Commerce presentation. Holly Deitman, Executive Director, is here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak this evening. I have a lot of events coming up that I want to share with you, so if you can't keep up, just check our website. It's bataviachamber.org, under the Chamber Calendar or the Community Calendar. We have all of this listed and lots more details. So, on May 11th at 5:00 PM, in coordination with the Second Fridays and the unleashing of the dogs for Bulldog's Unleash 2.0, we have a ribbon cutting for Batavia Family Dental. So please join us that evening for lots of fun, obviously, with it being Second Fridays and the unleashing of Bulldog's Unleash 2.0. On May 16th at 11:00 AM, we have a ribbon cutting for diamond rigging. They have been in Batavia for a very long time, and as a matter of fact, I believe we're celebrating their 40th anniversary with them. And they're going to have a little, we've kind of forced ourselves on them because they're going to have food. That evening, on May 16th at 5:00 PM, we have our Networking It event, and that is going to be at Aqua Viva Fine Dining, just up the road here on Houston. It is going to be open and ready for us that evening. Our cause of the month is the Depot Museum, so it's perfect. They're going to be able to walk right across Houston Street to give tours of the current facility and also look at plans for their upcoming expansion projects. So please, join us on May 16th at 5 o'clock at the new Aqua Viva in Batavia. On May 19th, we have at noon, a ribbon cutting for Michelle Weir Photography. On May 24th at 7:30 AM, we have our HR programming that we are doing in conjunction with the Valley Industrial Association. This one will be on background checks and legal update. So please join us if you'd like to learn about that. And then, last but not least, on May 24th at 4:00 PM, we have a ribbon cutting for the new location for Bulldog Plumbing. So please join us for that. Lots of ribbon cutting, so unfortunately for everyone else in the city, we're keeping the mayor very busy, coming and cutting all of these ribbons for us, and he's so gracious to join us for all of them. Thank you. You're amazing. Anything else I can, I have lots more. I can keep going. But I would like to give an opportunity for these three fine ladies here from Code Crays, who we just did their ribbon cutting. They are here to talk to you about this great new educational experience they have in Batavia. We have Jennifer and Brooke Lutgert and Laura Severson.
Thank you. I'm Brooke Lutgert. This is Jennifer Lutgert, my sister-in-law, and our good friend Laura. We're Code Crays LLC. We are located at 1,001 East Wilson Street, Suite 140. We were fortunate enough to purchase this wonderfully handicapped accessible building and set up our coding instruction center, maker space, creative workshop space, I don't know. We have many, many different services to offer. We also do web design and web hosting. We were most grateful to have Mayor Shilka with us on the 21st for our ribbon cutting and our grand opening. To give you a little bit of background, we're a family-owned enterprise. Jennifer and myself own Code Crays. We stand for, as many of you do, innovation in Batavia and the education of our youth. Laura is our web design consultant, who was willing to help anyone and everyone, local merchants especially, and artisans, to set up their own presence online. We'd love to help you. I sent around my business card. Please have a look at our website. It's www.codecrays.com or our Facebook site. If there are questions, I'm happy to add.
Yeah, you want to tell us what your hours of operation are?
Our hours of operation revolve primarily around our hours of instruction. While we're there between 10 and 5, Monday through Friday, as well as Saturdays in the morning, we also have additional hours of business because we offer many courses in the evenings, especially to children after school. We have an upcoming summer camp program. Some of those offerings are also on Sunday afternoons. We have both adult instruction as well as children's instruction in all age groups.
And did you give us your phone number? We got you on TV here, so I'm trying to get you some free advertising.
Your telephone number? The phone number is 630-828-5566. And you can reach us, as I said, on our website or jennifer@codecrays.com. So we're very excited about our upcoming summer school events. I hope you'll have a look to see what we can offer your children. We're very excited about this opportunity because we've worked very hard to develop a curriculum that incorporates not only coding instruction, that is computer programming in languages such as Python, JavaScript. We do start with Scratch for our youngest, but we also have a full robotics curriculum there. My husband is the instructor of robotics. He, with his philosophy and logic background, we were academics before entering this line of work. So after leaving university, what we have done is devoted our time to come up with a curriculum that will allow us to compete at a national level with the Vex IQ robots. Again, these are resources that have been provided to us by MIT, by Carnegie Mellon University, that will allow our children, our youth within this community, to compete and potentially walk away with prizes as large as full scholarships to Carnegie Mellon. So it's something that we're very, very excited about, and we're here, ready to promote in any way that we can.
Yeah, I, as they just reported, I had the opportunity and the honor of doing the ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago, and I would tell you, as Holly just mentioned, I get to do a lot of these, and I always suggest this is one of the more innovative business ideas I've seen in this town in a long time. And I was very impressed with the number of young, very young children that were running around there who seemed to almost have a much better command of a computer than I ever dreamt of having. And I mean, really, there's some very innovative stuff happening at this location. And to give you, for the old timers in the room wondering where that address is, we're just to the west of Heritage Woods Senior Citizen Complex on the same side of the street, just to the south of the Burlington Railroad right-of-way that runs through there. And I thought it was kind of irony because this is really a brand-new idea in a new location, and if you go look where Christopher Payne arrived in 1833 to site, build the first house in Kane County and put in the first claim of settlement, it was on this piece of property where they are with a new business 180-plus years later with a totally new idea. So on the same piece of property, new things continue to reinvent themselves and reemerge. So I really thought it was kind of ironic that we had this very new idea and this new business on the oldest site in all of Kane County as a place to set up shops. So we're kind of recycling that land into a much probably greater and grander idea than what Christopher Payne could have ever imagined in 1833. So I really appreciate what they're trying to do there, and we wish you the very best and success and drive and interest. I think you're going to find it when the town finds out what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I am told that we are going to delay the presentation of the Tri-City Health Partnership Medical and Dental Clinic presentation to another meeting, probably next meeting. The Executive Director, who we met with this afternoon, emailed Laura and said that she had had a family emergency come up and that she was going to be unable to attend. So we'll go to item number 11, which is the presentation of the Tri-City Family Services. Do we have somebody here for that? If you would come up, please, and introduce yourselves, and we have a proclamation to do for you once you get done.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Laura Poss. I'm the Executive Director of Tri-City Family Services, and I'm honored to have Cheryl Johnson, our Board President, with us tonight. And the mayor was gracious enough to come and celebrate with us in September, our 50th anniversary. For those of you that aren't familiar with Tri-City Family Services, we're a community mental health agency. Last fiscal year, we provided 3,700 residents from the Tri-City area with over 50,000 hours of counseling, case management, and psychiatric services. And one of the things that makes us very special in this area is not just our longevity, but the fact that we provide a sliding scale that allows people to receive these services regardless of their ability to pay. So many of the residents of Batavia and the Tri-City areas who don't have insurance or have deductibles that are too high for them to afford can come to Tri-City and get quality mental health services for a very reasonable cost, and for that, we are grateful. And so what we are asking tonight is that the mayor proclaim May Mental Health Awareness Month. So I'm wearing green in honor of that. Green is the color of Mental Health Awareness Month. You apparently did not get my phone call, but...
No, no.
Okay. So in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month, we've put green ribbons around the Tri-City area. We've put articles up on our website and through social media. We're spreading the word. We've been interviewed by local papers, and we're making sure that we're trying to fight the stigma of mental health. One of the things that's very important to my heart and to Cheryl's and those of us that work at Tri-City and are on the board is making sure that mental health is as important to the citizens of the Tri-City area as your physical health, your recreational health, your spiritual health, your occupational health, your school health. And so we want to make sure that the ability to come and receive services is available to everyone and that they feel free to do this and make it part of their life. So thank you for taking time to proclaim May Mental Health Awareness Month.
I just want to say, as she indicated, I had the honor to be at their 50th anniversary, I guess we would call it. And, you know, it was very obvious, you know, how successful this organization has been. I can tell you from a number of years of reading Batavia Police Reports and other things you get to hear when you're the mayor of the town, that this organization has interceded and been successful in a lot of personally related issues involving a number of families in our town, and really has done some almost lifesaving work as far as structure of the family and keeping things together and putting people back on the right track, and really has done some wondrous work here. And we would be a lesser region without them going to battle for us on a day-to-day basis. So they really have developed a record of success and appreciation for the grand work you do, totally under the cover, so to speak. You never read about it in the newspaper. You never get any write-ups of, you know, any adulation from anybody, at least publicly, but it's there and it really is working, and the tried-and-true record is very sound and one we should all be very, very proud of. So we have, Alderman Atack, do you have a copy of the proclamation?
I do not.
Let me give it to you.
I thought it was connected to the website. Proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas the effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens shares the burden of mental health problems and has the responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Mental Health Month in Batavia, Illinois, and urge all members of the community to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Sign Mayor Jeff D. Shelkey. I move that proclamation be approved as read.
Second. Motion second. Moved by Alderman Atack, second by who was it? Alderman Metzler. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent, so on behalf of the City of Batavia, I'm proud to present to you this proclamation and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and thank you for your kind words.
Thank you.
Can we get a good picture with you?
Sure.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, as per the action under the agenda motion, we are going to move then to resolution 18-58-R approving the location of the Flag Day Memorial on city-owned property. And I think I'll just recognize Mr. Dempsey because he's been spearheading this. If you would come forward and maybe offer any words of...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Joined with me is project architect Steve Visillian, former Batavia alderman and all-around great Batavia citizen. Thank you, guys, for giving us an opportunity to come up again. I won't make a presentation, but I do have all the presentation documents, including the boards. If anybody needs to see them, we'd be happy to do it, but we are delighted to be in front of you tonight for approval on the location, which I think Alderman Atack earlier at our last meeting said will be a great entryway to the municipal center, the police department, and certainly a good complement to everything that's going around the Riverwalk Park here. So we are part of the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization. We do plan on having a monument built to honor Batavia citizen Dr. Bernard Sagrand, and we do plan on dedicating that on Sunday, June 14th of 2020. And with your approval tonight, we will begin the hard work of finalizing the design, working with local municipal groups to include George Sheets, the library, Citizen Advisory Committee, and a number of other volunteers to hone in on the items that will go on the monument. We will be finalizing the legal agreement with the city staff, and we will be starting to get construction documents created so that we can get final budget and final price for construction. So I'm here to answer any questions that anybody may have in regards to the monument.
Any questions? Alderman, you want to make any comments?
I'm just very excited that it's been a long process of about two years since it kicked off, that we are finally here today with citing and beginning, starting to build it.
Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Austin and Steve, I think you know that I'm very supportive of the effort that you're putting forth here on this. I did walk around the area that we're talking about here tonight again, and I actually thought about asking if we could table this and bring it back for further discussion, but I probably won't go there, but I'm going to express my concerns. My concerns are that at one point in time that, I believe it may even have been Steve, I'm not sure, that we hired and had a plan drawn up for expansion of the parking for the city hall out here and including some new entrance designs. That was quite a few years back, and we didn't have the money to do it, and we just kind of tabled that. But is the need there for that? That's my concern. Also, we just recently put electric all the way around that area over there for the use of vendors to be used during the events that the Park District has. That area is used a lot for other events. It's used to put the porta-potties on when we have a lot of events down here. I'm worried that we're putting too much into too small of a spot. I know you've worked very hard to try to find the right place because it's hard to accomplish everything that you're trying to accomplish. Put it where it's visible, put it where it's accessible, put it where you're not putting too much. One of the ideas was, you know, we want to put it where it can be a main attraction and school buses and what have you can bring kids and drop them off and make it an event. Well, where are the school buses going to park? You know, so I don't know where the right spot is. I've often thought that maybe right across the bridge here where the old Larson Becker property used to be, that someday there's going to be a Larson Becker quote-unquote park might be the right spot. You could see it as you're coming down Houston Street. It would be an expansion of the downtown area, continuation of the expansion. I don't know. You know, you guys have been working very, very hard on this, I know. So, I'm just kind of curious as to what your thoughts are and what my concerns are. And, you know, I'm kind of blindsiding you with this, but...
That's okay.
I guess that's what I'm good at. I don't know.
Well, it's part of the, it's part of the process, certainly. To address one of your concerns, where are the school buses going to park? I got here at about 7:29, just before the meeting started, and there was so much fire equipment parked all around here. If the fire trucks can navigate the turning radius, I'm pretty optimistic that the school buses can too. Certainly about putting this monument kind of center stage here, right in front of the municipal center and the police department. The fact that it is a historic site, that items that are on that monument that are part of Batavia's rich history actually happened right here in this building and around this building is kind of, I think, part of the rich history of the monument. As far as the concerns, it has been, as Alderman Callahan had mentioned, it has been a two-year process. You were, you were part of a lot of those initial discussions. I can't speak as to what the future holds as far as an additional parking field. I can tell you that there's not a ton of space over there, and I don't know if Vassillion or any civil engineers, architects have looked at the amount of additional parking there. I can tell you that we have had several meetings with the Batavia Park District, and the executive director of the Batavia Park District did say that that is a...
Dead space for programming.
Dead space for programming was the exact terminology. It was used during the Art in Your Eye days, but that program has not been around for the past couple of years. And I, and I do understand that in a lot of cases, that grassy space out there, not a grassy, an old grassy space out there, has been used for porta-potties and that type of stuff for races. But, you know, I'm pretty confident that we could try to find some other location. There is a lot of space out there to accommodate that. The benefit of having this monument to Dr. Bernard Sagrand and to the American spirit in front of the municipal center, as Alderman Atech mentioned, is a gateway to who we are and part of who we are and what we do, and the fact that for generations, good work's been getting done here in this area, I think is, is a great location for it. I don't know what the future of the East Side holds or the future of the Larson Becker piece holds. I haven't studied that. But what I do know is that we have the capacity and we can build the monument out here and have it be a great complimentary addition to this campus that we have down here. And I think with some programming for the schools and having a clear understanding of where buses can pick up and drop off, as well as working with the city staff to find a spot for the porta-potties for other events, I think it can be a great complement to the park and campus that's here, and I think we can work through some of the programming issues. I don't know if I adequately addressed all the concerns, but I do appreciate you bringing them up.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I don't think you've settled my concerns, but I understand.
Alderman Stark?
Is it illuminated 24/7 or is it, I mean, it's, what kind of light pollution, for lack of a better word, should, you know, I can't think of a way to determine.
There are going to be five pillars around, around the perimeter serve dual purpose. In one sense, they highlight five iconic flag moments or flag events, and then at the top of them are the lighting that's going to be for the flag. So, we envision those being LED lights and being pointed specifically toward the flag rather than a wide dispersal of light. The other lights are going to be ground lights around the perimeter that are going to be much softer and directed just at the face of the monument.
Okay, great. I just wanted, if anyone who asked from across the Depot Pond how much light this was going to emit into their homes, I wanted to be able to give them a good answer.
Right, and it wouldn't.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
One of the things that I always thought about this, the beginning of this, or from the beginning of this, was if we had a monument like this, if we take it and we don't put it somewhere directly downtown in front of everything else, it gets lost. I think of a lot of the things that I've been around to in different spots in the country when they aren't in a focal spot, usually in the downtown, no matter how great the monument is, they get lost and then they get forgotten. And that's something that I don't think will happen with this, and I really think it will complement the campus, you know, the view out here. I don't think, especially because it started out so much bigger than it is or that it's proposed at now, I think the scale of it fits in that spot. So, I think it'll, it'll be fine there, and if there's any lighting issues, I'm sure we can address that into the future. But I do think that the possibilities of all the things that can go along with this with education and recognition and just to add to what we already have on display downtown here is the history that Batavia has is a perfect fit.
What's the circumference of it now?
The inside circumference is 40 feet. The wall itself is 14 inches, so basically a foot more. That brings it to 42, and then there's a 10-foot walk away around the perimeter, so it's total of 62. The earlier designs were much wider. And the monument, the way it's designed now, fills only about half of that, of that green space. So, there is other green space that when we work with a landscape designer, if one of the programmatic requirements we get from working with staff is give us room for eight porta-potties or something like that, we'll design that into that function, into the space that we have.
Other comments or questions? Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, I just want to kind of highlight the additional part of that all of out there is municipal and park and governmental entities, and this is going to be financed solely and wholly in perpetuity by public donations to it. No tax dollars, nothing along those lines. I think, I understand your concerns about it, but that's one of those things that when we're talking about bringing people down and buses and traffic, that is a phenomenal thing to have. Figuring out where we're going to put our residents, neighbors, friends, family that are coming from out of town to see how we are honoring and respecting the United States' flag, the education that goes along with it, and specifically to honor board members that are on there, such as U.S. Congressional Medal of Honor recipient Al Lynch, that it is an amazing testament to, an opportunity for our children to be able to take part in.
I just wanted to offer a few comments here tonight on this subject. Back in 1973, the Batavia City Council was meeting down the street in the old city hall building, which is now offices. And there was a young newspaper reporter at that time sitting in the audience by the name of Jeff Shelkey, and he was reporting for the old Batavia News Herald. And the night arrived when Mayor Robert Brown, who was then in office, introduced Peg Bonn and Phil Elstrom, and they announced that they were going to suggest, as Peg was then chairman of the Batavia Plan Commission, that the Dunbar Capel Building, as it was called at that time, was up for sale and that the city should move rather rapidly on this to acquire this piece of property because this was about almost a 20-acre stretch of property down here, which included the water, which is now the Depot Pond, and the area where the depot is now located, that this was going to be a grand opportunity for Batavia to grab a unique moment and do something real creative with its downtown area. And thank goodness to the, and I'll give a lot of credit, and I'm not doing it because the son is sitting here with us, but Bob Brown, who was mayor of Batavia, really stood up and said, "I think this is the way to go. We don't know what opportunities this is going to offer to Batavia, but I think it could do some great and grand things for this town." And I don't know if I quoted him directly, but that's basically what he said. And so, the city council that night passed a motion to enter into negotiations to buy this. In the meantime, a guy by the name Larry Dempsey jumped into the fray, and he bought it out from underneath the city. And then there was some interesting discussions and negotiations, and within about six weeks, Larry Dempsey decided he was going to turn around and sell it back to the city. And it didn't really ask for a lot more money, but with the idea that this would spur redevelopment because he then had built the Batavia Shopping Plaza and was hoping for some other redevelopment to take place. And with the commitment by Mayor Brown that the city would develop this piece of property, Mr. Dempsey was willing to sell it. And this included taking part of the pond and bringing a street across. Houston Street was not there at that moment. They had to go in and fill that in and fill in what was then the rest of the pond. And it was quite an adventure, and then when it got out in the public, we were going to do this, there was a lot of hellfire and damnation about it because a lot of people thought the city council and Mayor Brown were totally crazy. This was never going to work. Nobody would ever come down here. This was never going to be any good. And the pundits of the moment were all proven wrong, I will suggest to you, by history, that this was all put together. So, I think it's kind of ironic. We sit here tonight with a second and third generation of some of the people who were the key players in this thing, of putting this together as one of what I think is probably one of the most unique stories in the history of Batavia that has never really been fully appreciated or shared, and that's what Dr. Sagrand did. Now, quickly about Dr. Sagrand. He started the idea of Flag Day up in Wobeka, Wisconsin, which is out northwest of Milwaukee, about 30 miles out in the middle of a little farm area. And he was a school teacher at age 18 in a one-room school, and he got the idea that on June 14th was the day that Betsy Ross supposedly had made the first American flag and Congress had adopted it, and so this should be American Flag Day. And so, he began this idea of putting this out there, and lo and behold, it slowly caught on. And then Sagrand left Wobeka and moved to Chicago and went to dental school and became a dentist. And as things worked out, he ended up moving down on South Batavia Avenue into a house that's now kind of ironically also being restored by a young couple to bring back kind of the Sagrand story of what he was all about because he had his office as part of his house down there. So, interestingly, Sagrand, while he was putting this idea together, went through some serious personal tragedy. He had a niece that was the victim of a very high-profile murder in the city of Chicago, and there since has been a book written about it, and I'm told now they're working on a movie. It's called The Devil at the White City. And Sagrand's niece was one of the victims of the devil at the white city. And so, if you read the book, Sagrand is mentioned in that book with a number of instances because he kind of went to Chicago and got involved in the investigation of the murder of his niece and everything else, and that's just kind of a sidebar. But people who knew him have shared that this was a great personal tragedy to him because he was very close to this niece and whatever. But he never lost sight of this Flag Day idea, and so he kept promoting the idea, and he was, wrote articles and gave speeches and went out and spoke around the country about it. And it wasn't until 1916, when we were about to enter World War I, that Woodrow Wilson was president, and he was looking for some significant symbol to kind of, kind of hype up patriotism in the United States of America. And he heard about this idea of this Flag Day. And so, Woodrow Wilson grabbed the idea and did the first proclamation of Flag Day in 1916, just as World War I was breaking out. And as you may remember, this year on June 14th of 2016, we celebrated the 100th birthday of Flag Day here in Batavia. So, you know, this whole thing has kind of come together. This is not any new thing that has just been thought of. This has been kind of in the making for better than 100 years for all intent and purposes, and it's unique to me about how these components came together. We're in a building here tonight that was originally built by William Van Nortrick. And interestingly, if you ever watched the movie 12 Years a Slave, William Van Nortrick is mentioned in the, in that movie as an engineer who was then building canals in upstate New York, and the gentleman who, who became the slave worked for William Van Nortrick. And in the movie, he talks about William Van Nortrick taught him how to make rafts and all this stuff. So, I mean, William, and William Van Nortrick had a great grandson that used to come here and visit me in my early days as mayor, and he ends up being one of the monuments men in World War II that ran around France and Germany and saved all the great pieces of artwork in France. So, we got a family that's involved in this property that has a lot of America, serious American history, which is now being portrayed in movies and all kinds of stuff. We're the ones that built this building, so you got that going. But more interestingly to me is the fact, and most of you heard me tell this story, in the late, early 1960s, the U.S. government was trying to go to the moon, and they came up with the idea that they needed some special components made. And one of the places they came to make a component for the rocket that landed on the moon was to this building, to this room where we sit tonight. And in this room was a laboratory that Dunbar Capel had, and as you may or may not know, Dunbar Capel was in the business of making conveyor belts that loaded grain onto ships. And so, they had all this tremendous ability to understand the use of rubber and how rubber reacted. And so, Werner von Braun, who is credited with being the father of the American space program, came to this room two different times and spent several days in this room as they played with making what they described as a flexible fuel line. It was a fuel line made out of rubber, and the idea was, is that when you launch this thing into space and then when it separated itself from the orbiting capsule of the moon and then landed on the moon and then took off from the moon and then reunited with the orbiting capsule, they were afraid if the fuel line didn't have some flexibility into it, it could break and the whole moon landing thing would be a big disaster. And so, they made that device in this room. So, we got this unique connection with the moon landing right here on this property. So, I mean, there's just some tremendous history in this site and in this property. So, in the last few months, I've counseled with Austin and I've talked with Steve as they've gone around town and tried to explore potential sites for this thing. And I guess I would suggest that they've, they've run into some opposition at certain locations that they had, some of it very logical, probably well-taken opposition. But, you know, I think there's, the message here, I guess what I'm trying to prevail is that this need, this needs to be put here. I mean, we need to, with all this history that we got, that no other town around here has, and I have all these mayors come in here and visit me, and I share all this with them, and they all sit here and scratch their head and say, "Well, you got me beat. I don't have anything like this." That includes Brad Stevens, the mayor up in Rosemont, with everything he's got. I had him in here one day and shared all this with him, says, "I can't..." So, then I take him upstairs and show him our Saturday evening post cover from 1958, and he just shook his head. So, I mean, we've got some great stuff here. I mean, and it really needs to be all brought together in a package, and I just think, you know, we got to have this thing, this, for the future generations of this town to realize and appreciate what a grand story we got right here. And the beautiful fact of this is, if you and I, all of us in this room, come down here in the summertime and in the winter, and we see the, all the people gathering for concerts and shows and celebrations and all the stuff that we're, restaurant, you know, meals and everything else that we're doing down here these days, we got something here that we should all be very proud of. And many of you on this council get a lot of the credit for helping to put all this together. But we've put together a program here that really, I think, makes Batavia stand out as kind of a unique place that people are very proud of and live here. I've told this again. I just had my 50th class reunion here, and so many of my classmates came back, and they repeatedly, one after another, said, "Can't believe what you've done in this town." You know, we thought we, when we went to school here, this was a dump down here, and look at the beautiful park and garden and Riverwalk and everything you've built. This is, this is fabulous to be able to come back to your old hometown and see how you've transformed this thing into really something. I don't deserve the credit for that. It really deserves, it goes to Dave Brown's father and Peg Bonn and Phil Elstrom and some of the original ones that put this idea on the street. But I think this serves to further carry forth the vision of what this whole area is all about and really gives us a unique attraction that will be unique in the United States of America and will probably put us on the map for a whole bunch of other people to want to come in and see this. And then you have to appreciate, what's the spin-off vitality of this idea to the rest of the downtown? Will that not create parking opportunities, and will it not create new restaurants and new stores and other new attractions and bike riders and all the good stuff that we want? So, I just think this is a key to Batavia's future as it pays tribute to its past.
Well, I didn't mean to ruffle your feathers. With that, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 18-58-R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Callahan. Any further discussion? I apologize.
Because I'm not sure that any bill or ordinance we pass tonight is the answer to this major transition to all this additional radio transmission that's going to have to be plugged into the area here. And the future auto mechanics of the world are going to have to be computer radio technicians, I think, before they're anything else. Because it sounds like this is really going to be some intensified stuff. It's interesting to sit there and listen to the state because right now, they're worried about, you know, you put all these electric cars on the street, you're not paying gas tax. So I've heard that they're already thinking about going to change the licensing on these babies so that when you buy one, they write down your mileage for the year, and then when you go next year to buy your new plate, you have to show them what your mileage is. And then there's a bill on that mileage for what you've put on that car to make up for the gas tax that you didn't pay during the year. So they're going to get you one way or another with this thing. I can assure you of that.
Alderman Stark?
You know, Scott, this is something that I don't know why it hasn't, like, bubbled to the surface of my consciousness prior to this discussion. But when we talk about density in housing, and, you know, you're talking about filling in gaps. And a long ago, in my storied career of sales, the first thing I ever sold was cell communication. And when we would do demos anywhere, because we sold to contractors, we'd go into a metal building and get no cell reception. And so that made me start thinking about a project potentially like One North Washington and the residents of that building, and what would their cell reception be like if there weren't cell antennas on that building? When you've got that large density of people who want to use their cell phones at any given time. So suddenly, I start looking at things a little bit differently in terms of, you know, when you're building a senior center, they're probably not all using their cellphone, you know, at any given time. But when you're building someplace where a lot of younger people of all different ages live, and they want to all talk on their cellphone, are they going to be able to get cell communication? So I'm wondering if that, those things kind of go hand in hand. When you build a taller, more dense, densely populated building, do you need that to be able to use your cellphone? I'd be kind of interested to know.
Yeah, I think what they're happening, what they're doing in some situations is they're building essentially a repeater that's inside the building that, you know, amplifies the cell signal. So that's, you know, I think we might even have something in here for the Wi-Fi system, too. So, you know, we typically will do those inside the ceilings. I think there's even been commercials about guys going in the ceiling and saying, you know, what are we doing?
Right, right.
Oh, we can get, we can email from the lunchroom, kind of thing.
Right.
So you're getting a lot more of that. And then, and to, you know, follow up on what the mayor is saying, you know, one of the things that's been talked about is, you know, it's not, when we did cell towers originally, remember, there was a decentralized network. Every single cell company built their own network. And it wasn't until later they started cooperating more and saying, okay, let's co-locate these all on one antenna, because it makes more sense, it's cheaper for everybody. Unfortunately, we're not doing that with this next generation, because now every network, based on this new state law, is all going to be building their own small cell network. So we're going to have, potentially, you know, Verizon having all their little network of little antennas, and T-Mobile having a network of antennas. So, I mean, you're going to see that. And then on top of that, we've heard about some of the Internet of Things, you know, the IoT that people talk about, that those, some of those things are going to have their own networks, too. So LG may have their own separate network from everything else that's going to be operating your fridge and your television and everything else. So, I mean, this is a whole new world, brave new world, we'll call it, you know, of all these new things that are going to be coming. And so it's a, it's a different, you know, type of technology and decentralizing more so than it was when we had antennas.
So, back to the question. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't.
Well, I'm just going to put out there, the original discussion was, I think it was tabled for safety purposes and then for health reasons. And then following up on what the mayor said, in 15 years, we're going to have these autonomous vehicles. You know, the way technology has been exploding exponentially, in 15 years, we might not have cell towers. I mean, it's very good probability we don't. And so they'll have something else. And so I wouldn't get too hung up on cell towers. I think we should just stay to the, you know, be more concerned with the health of our residents and probably just call this question, because this is strictly not, this resolution is not dealing with cell towers, correct?
Right, we pulled that out completely.
Right. So let's just call the question.
We have a motion in the...
We have a motion second for the approval of ordinance 1823.
So moved.
We're already got it.
We already got it.
Yep.
Oh, do we?
Yeah. Kirk, call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
A-Tech?
No.
Okay, that vote is 12 yes, one no, and one absent. Motion's approved. All right, moving to item 16, which is Resolution 18-56-R, authorizing the Pennsylvania Transformer Technology to furnish and install at the Northeast Distribution Substation Transformer in amount not to exceed $487,022 with a 5% contingency amount. Alderman, O'Brien, do you have?
Alderman Chanset will present this one and the next resolution also, Your Honor.
Okay.
Yes, Your Honor, I'm actually going to present both together. 56 and 57 cover about three quarters of a million dollars in upgrades at the Paramount Substation. We have transformer and circuit breakers. This did pass unanimously in committee. What really came from the discussion, though, was how under budget this came in. It was about $200,000 under budget. The questions were concerning whether or not we were being a little too conservative with our budget. And staff said that a lot of these projects are bid out multiple years in a row, and that's what attributed to the change in the budget. So if there are no questions, I would move that we adopt 1856 are authorizing for the transformer purchase in an amount not to exceed $487,022 plus a 5% contingency amount.
Second.
Move by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution 1856-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
A-Tech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Okay, the motion's approved. 12 yes, no no's, two absent. The motion's approved. Moving then to 17, which is Resolution 1857-R, authorizing Siemens Industries to design, manufacture, and furnish the delivery of two 34-kV power circuit breakers for the Northeast Distribution Substation in an amount not to exceed $58,722 plus 5% contingency. Alderman Chanset?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution
Ure?
Aye.
18-57-R.
McFadden?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Brown?
Rosato?
Kirk, call the roll.
Aye.
A-Tech? Chanset?
Aye.
Aye.
Stark? Wolf?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Salvati?
13 yes, no no's, one absent.
Aye.
O'Brien?
Okay, moving to 18, which is Resolution 1862-R, approving the purchase of three windmills
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
from Francine Poppick for the amount of $11,375.
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Who's got this one?
Brown?
I do.
Aye.
Alderman A-Tech?
Rosato?
The Windmill City of Batavia has had, has the opportunity to purchase three windmills
Aye.
A-Tech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Okay, the motion's approved. 13 yes, no no's, one absent.
from Bob Poppick's collection. And Bob Poppick was very instrumental in helping Batavia get the windmills that we
The motion's approved. Moving then to 17, which is Resolution 1857-R, authorizing Siemens Industries to design,
have today, representing our history and the industry that was here many years ago.
manufacture, and furnish the delivery of two 34-kV power circuit breakers for the Northeast
So we've been, we've agreed that purchase, or subject to this resolution, the Appleton
Distribution Substation in an amount not to exceed $58,722 plus 5% contingency.
Goodhue manufactured in the building that is now City Hall, valued at $6,500 for $5,000.
Alderman Chanset?
So moved.
Second.
Challenge 27, Bob personally restored this metal mill, and he and his brother built
Move by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution
the wood tower.
18-57-R.
It's valued at $4,000 and offered to the city for $3,000.
Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
And Challenge Big Spear Model 1913, this mill is on the original Challenge Tower.
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
It's valued at $4,500 but offered to the city for $3,375.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
And so I move that we approve Resolution 18-62-R, approval to purchase three windmills
Malley?
from Francine Poppick for $11,375.
Second.
Motion by Alderman A-Tech, second by Alderman Meitzler for the approval of the purchase of the windmills. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
A-Tech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
A-Tech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 13 yes, no no's, one absent. Okay, per action of the agenda, then, item 19 will be the approval of the annual department head reappointments. You've all been given a copy of them. Anybody have any questions or?
We approved it at the COW meeting.
Right, we just need a formal approval at the council.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman A-Tech, second by Alderman Chanset. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
A-Tech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 13 yes, no no's, one absent. Okay, moving to 20, the administrators' report.
Good evening. Just wanted to remind everyone that we're going to have a special meeting next Monday, May 14th, and the purpose is for strategic planning. That meeting will be held at the East Side Fire Station, and senior staff will also be in attendance for that meeting. Just so the public is aware, that that is basically just an opportunity for the city council and staff to have a discussion about the strategic plan and formulating that, of course, at a later date. When that plan is in a draft form, it will come back to a committee of the whole meeting where the public would be able to have comment on that strategic plan that's developed. But I just wanted to set the expectations that Monday, May 14th, is a discussion for staff and for city council. At that meeting, we'll be going over the vision, mission, and value statements, as well as the SWAT analysis. Got good news today. Permit was submitted to the Community Development Department for the former Fazoli's and Salt Creek BBQ location. It is a company called Crab Boil. So that will be an interesting addition to the various cuisines that we have available to us here in Batavia. So we are looking forward to that. Staff will be submitting a grant application for a community development block grant for roadway improvements to Kane County on May 7th or sooner. This is for roadway resurfacing along North River Street and several intersection roads. And a resolution approving this application will be on the Committee of the Whole agenda for May 15th and for city council approval on May 21st. Staff has continued to work on various closing issues on the Wilson-Spiller property. The current closing date is on May 31st. Focus Logistics, which is located at 1250 Douglas Avenue, the interior buildout and occupancy continue on the relocation of Focus Logistics from its former headquarters location on Roosevelt Road in West Chicago. Walmart Realty has notified us that they have decided to sell the former Sam's Club property, placing it in other holdings in a group portfolio that's going to be represented by CBRE. And the sale will first go public at the 2018 Annual International Council of Shopping Centers recon event in Las Vegas that will be held later in May. And Public Works dam signage and lighting plans were let for bid and have an opening date scheduled for May 24th. Ongoing rehabilitation of well number six and well number eight is underway. An update will be provided at tomorrow night's Committee of the Whole meeting, as well as a report on the odor control efforts at the treatment plant. We held a pre-construction meeting for the City Hall Window Replacement and Masonry Project last week, and sidewalk removal and replacement project is ongoing. And residents, if they're interested in finding out if their sidewalk is part of this annual program, they can go onto the homepage of the city's website. And at the bottom, there is a link to City Maps. And one of the maps that you can bring up are all the construction projects that are happening throughout town. It'll show you which roadways are being resurfaced, which sidewalks are being redone. And of course, if anyone sees an issue that looks like it needs more immediate attention, they can contact Public Works, who will come out and investigate the problem. And also, today was the bid opening for our solid waste hauling contract, and we received three bids. And Public Works Department is currently going over those to determine whether they met the specifications of what was required. Today, we met with Park District and also Buzz Miller, who has generously offered to commission the sculpture "From the Waters Comes My Bounty." And we found a nice site that is along the Depot Pond that is a piece of Park District property. So we're going to put together kind of a physical plan to show you a diagram to see if it meets everybody's, if it's satisfactory. That is all that I have. Unless you have any questions for me?
Alderman Brown?
When is the window replacement tuck pony going to start on the building here?
June 1st.
Are there comments or questions? Thank you.
Thanks. Just wanted to let you know that Gary left earlier tonight to turn on the lighting that has been installed by our electric department along the dam. So feel free to check out what that lighting looks like maybe as you leave the meeting this evening. Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Alderman Brown?
Just, yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just some meetings to announce. Tomorrow evening's COW is going to start at 7:00 PM. And then Wednesday, the Environmental Commission meeting, it begins at 7:00 PM. And the special COW meeting, as Laura just talked about, is going to be May 14th at 7:00 PM, Laura, for that one?
Yes.
And then the next COW meeting, regular COW meeting, is going to be May 15th, and that is also at 7:00 PM. And there's a lot of discussion about One Washington placed on that agenda. That's all I have.
Government Services, Alderman A-Tech?
No report tonight.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have tomorrow night, we have the intergovernmental agreement with the Park District about the dam signing and lighting. And then also, I wanted to remind everybody that the schedule is on the city website for Brush Collection, and that does start next week on the East Side on Monday, and then West Side will be the following week on May 21st.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Your Honor. We will have an update on the wastewater treatment facility, and Gary's going to give us some information on electric utility deregulation for tomorrow night.
All right, do we have other business?
Just very briefly, I wanted to thank you and thank the city administrator for support in getting a youth organization on the agenda for our next meeting. We've talked in this group before about suicide prevention and providing resources to at-risk youth, and I just appreciate the connections that you've made on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just got a couple of thoughts I want to share after the mayor's report tonight. I'm very pleased that we're pursuing our strategic planning ideas. I think that's, we're kind of, that thing's kind of lax, hanging in a, in a lax right now. And just a couple of ideas I will share with you. People in town, you know, they see me, and I'm the closest politician that they can find, so they tell me what they think on a regular basis. One of the things I'm hearing from people is, is that there was a pretty good appreciation when the city of Batavia had our ongoing sidewalk replacement program, where every year, we tried to award each ward so many feet of new, or so much money to build sidewalks to like fill in gaps or replace areas that have been badly broken. And the staff has been picked that up the last couple of years and tried to at least do some repair and replacement work. But I would suggest to you that in our strategic planning, as we look at city infrastructure, that one of the things we need to take a look at is trying to fill in the gaps where we seem to have some missing sidewalks in the community. And, you know, I go out to Tanglewood subdivision, and I'm not, I'm looking at Alderman McFadden, I'm not trying, but there's, there's a few places there where some stuff, maybe along Deer Path Road, and maybe something on Main Street that would go down to Wade Avenue and some of that, that would probably tie things together much better there. Certainly up in the, in the fourth ward, up in the Highlands, there's some areas that we could certainly tie stuff together. And, I mean, there's hit and miss throughout the town. There's various missing stretches of sidewalks. When we've, when we went through, and we had this program running for about 10 or 15 years, when we did it, every now and then, you would get somebody that, oh, I don't want the sidewalk built in front of my house. And some of that, sometimes we pushed back and didn't do it, others, we went ahead and did it. And, you know, I, I'm out around in the morning, and I, you know, every neighborhood by all six-story elementary schools, and I'm amazed at the number of kids that use these sidewalks. And I remember Alderman Wolf had a special sidewalk he wanted built on the old railroad right away that used to run Delingren's Foundry and behind Psychorus Greenhouse on Walnut Street. And he had the idea, they wanted to build a sidewalk that went down to Gusterson School. And to me, it made perfect sense, but when we got it down here, there were some folks that really had great angst about building that sidewalk. I was out there last week, and I'm, school was just getting ready to come, and I come around down Carlisle Road onto Hoover Lane there, and here comes all these kids walking down through, on that sidewalk from Morton and Blaine Street and all these areas. And, you know, every place I go, I see these sidewalks that really have filled out some necessary, you know, niches of area that needs to be done. So I just think that's a great program, and it's one that I would hope that we could maybe throw that into the strategic plan and talk about things that we, you know, things that we really want to do. The other thing I would tell you is, is that I think there's some, some neat ideas out there that maybe we should put on the list of things that should be seriously looked at by future city councils and future mayors and city administrators. And, you know, some of them maybe should be done sooner than later. I still have a lot of hope that maybe at some point, we can do something at the sewer plant and get a sidewalk around the riverside of that. And certainly another one that, you know, you look at stuff that you could do. I would love to see us get this bike trail finished over here onto the Larson and Becker property and take it up through the parking lot and put it onto Franklin Street where it would connect onto the trail going north. I don't think that would be that big of a deal, but I could see thousands of people using that trail, because it gets them out of River and Wilson intersection, which they don't belong in, they don't understand it, they're new to town, they're just passing through, and it, we're going to get some people hurt there. And I just would like to get everybody down on the river. They enjoy the river and the views and everything else, and I think that would be a tremendous aspect, asset to have over there, is to get that East Side trail finally connected up. And I gave a eulogy at a funeral on Friday for an old classmate of mine who passed away, Rich James. And I told the story at that, at his eulogy, that in 1981, when Phil Elstrom came up with the idea to build the bike trail, that Rich had been one of the real early supporters of that, because he was a bicycle rider. And Phil says to me, you know, we need to get this bike trail through the sewer plant from the quarry down to Island Avenue, so people don't out there. So we got Rich, and he came down, and we went down into the sewer plant, and we pioneered a trail through there, which was used for many years, and it went from Union Avenue down to Flynn Street. And I can think of thousands of people that used that thing, and it was kind of a kitty wampus thing through the sewer plant, but we put some fence up and it worked. And it really did, I think, make it very easy for a lot of people to get through. So, I mean, it's stuff like that that you can do that, at the end of the day, really makes a difference for the town and makes things, you know, very easy for people to understand why they are the way they are. So I just think in our strategic planning discussions, it's little pieces like that that should take some thought to be put into them. The other thing I wanted to share with you is, is that in the last couple of weeks, I have received several cries in the darkness, I'll call it, or requests for help from people in town who are in wheelchairs or in walkers. And they're telling me that they are finding that there's a lot of people in town who want to park their cars so that they block the sidewalks. And so, not that I want to turn loose some big ticket campaign, but I think, number one, I'd like to, in maybe the next issue of Neighbors Magazine, maybe do us a little article about why we should make every effort not to block sidewalks in residential neighborhoods, because there are more and more people seemingly who are on walkers or in wheelchairs or electric chairs or whatever. And when you get to a certain point, you, as most of you know, former Alderman Freitendahl's wife is a wheelchair-bound person, and he was one of them that talked to me recently over in his neighborhood, that there's several people that just, every night, just block the sidewalk with their car and make it so people can't get through. And I know Alderman Callahan has some people in his neighborhood that have those dilemmas, and most of you probably do. But there's some people, really nice people, that I think we should make this town as accessible and usable as we possibly can. And maybe if nothing else, we can have the Development Department or our code enforcement officer go out and start dropping some notes on people's windshield wipers that, hey, would you move this car next time and don't block the sidewalk here, and clean this up a little bit? Because I, after it's been said to me now several times, I have gone out at night and ridden around, and I'm not going to name them right now, but there's a couple of streets in town that are really classics for the sidewalks getting blocked by everybody just pulling their cars in, and the garage is full of stuff, so they can't get in the garage anymore, facing parallel to the sidewalk across their driveway, so between the street, their car, and then the sidewalk, and they're parked, they're blocking that way. Well, basically, they're parking on the parkway. And so, I mean, there's all kinds of games and ideas people play with you, but again, that's the type of stuff that, if you get into the, out and talk to the folks in the neighborhoods, those are the things that kind of are upset. Today, I got another email from a lady that she's all upset because she thinks our new streetlights are way too bright, and she'd like to have them calm down and not be as bright as they are. And so, there's a no-win here, but in the same token, those are just the types of stuff that you get yourself into, and you're trying to manage the city and respond to what people are saying and doing. So, I'm gonna share this email I got with the alderman from the ward it was in, and they can take a look at it and tell us what they think, but.
Could take the bright lights and put them over at 31 and McKee Street? No.
So, there are, there are some, there are some stuff going on, and so, I just, I guess I want to finish by saying I really want to thank the council. I wasn't here, as you know. Last week, I was in New York State on some stuff, so I wasn't able to be at Tuesday night's meeting, but I certainly found interesting the conversation that you had, and, you know, those are worthy, worthwhile conversations in my mind to have. And I think, you know, we're trying to handle a variety of issues in a responsible nature. And, you know, there's, there's some interesting dynamics happening specifically at the state of Illinois level, and there's all kinds of big ideas on a variety of subjects, but we're in the middle of a heavy-duty political campaign, and I'm not sure where all that's going, but there's a lot of people with a lot of ideas out there. I'll end the night by just saying, my personal view on one thing is, I just think it's a tremendous waste of money that we have a gubernatorial race going on in this state right now, where in the primaries, we spend over, so I'm told, over $250 million, I guess for TV and ads or whatever have you. And, you know, some people are suggesting we're about to go out and spend another $250 million. And, you know, I would think that somebody on one of these staffs or somebody that's running for governor could sit down and probably find 500 meaningful projects in the little towns in Illinois or in any town in Illinois, whether it's putting in a sidewalk that needs to be done, or buying somebody an ambulance or a fire truck, or fixing a water problem or whatever have you, and just take that $250 million and go out into the state and just spend it on stuff that needs to be spent. And, you know, I would think you'd get more votes doing that.
I've thought that for years. I mean, it's blatantly just trying to buy a vote, but, you know, all they're doing right now is, there's, what, five networks that are making the money off of it?
Well, I don't.
And the state still suffers.
I don't begrudge the networks for making some money.
Yeah.
And I don't begrudge the idea that the population be, should be educated as to where all these candidates stand on the issues. But $250 million on TV ads that are repeated, I must have seen some of those ads 100 times in the primary. And I just think that you could, there's a lot, I've had the opportunity, as most of you know, to travel this state, and I've been in most of these towns, and there's a lot of little things that need to be done, whether it's a traffic signal that should be put up, or, you know, some may help for some school that needs it. There's a lot of places you could easily put 250, and do some really good stuff. And I don't know why we, as a society, we can't get ourselves into that state of mind, but that's just me shooting my mouth off here tonight.
Your Honor, you know, with that being said, I hope we're all sending letters to our representatives to make sure we're reimbursed our full LGDF and that they don't touch that. And so, I mean, that's an important thing for all the communities throughout the state.
And I sent my Tobacco 21 as well.
Mayor, may I say something? You had mentioned thinking, suggesting that sidewalks be part of the strategic plan, and then you brought up the concern about bright lights, and then we talked about Buzz and the sculpture. Coincidentally, a few months ago, I was talking to Buzz about, Buzz Miller, about what was going on, what was important to Linnea when she was serving on the council. And he, light pollution and sidewalks.
Yeah.
We still, and I think it's great that we, there's continuity, and we keep working on some of the projects that were started. So, thank you.
Well, I mean, those are just the things that, you know, I'm very proud of this council, because I think we're on the right track. I mean, we obviously have our moments of disagreement and debate, and that's what government should be all about. But at the end of the day, we seem to be able to put it all aside here at the end of the day, once a decision has kind of been made, and go in the right direction of what we're doing. And it's not like we're giving Mark Foster a proper opportunity to sit here and say, "Oh gee, they just, they just passed a contract, and they're all going to the show in Chicago on Friday night because the guy they gave the contract to was buying them all tickets." I mean, we don't have that going on here. So, I mean, I think we have a lot in this government to be proud of, because we are running it the right way, and we are doing the things that need to be done and respond to the community. I, coming in here tonight, I ran into Peggy Kobe, and as you know, we just got the tax bills the other day, and everybody got them. I asked her to, and if your council wants, I'll share this with you, she normally gets me a packet of all the other cities' tax bills, and I can see then how much other towns are charging for their municipal tax and their pension plans and their schools and whatever have you. Fascinating to look at what some of these other places are spending and what the tax bills are. And the last few years, Batavia, in the comparison mode, has always looked very, very good in that. So, I'm gonna get, Peggy's gonna get me those, and I'll put them out to the council and let you guys see what, you know, our neighboring communities are, what their tax bill looks like.
That would be great.
I, Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion.
I'm over adjourned the city council.
Second.
Moved by Brown, second by Salvati. Kirk, take a voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.